A week or so ago, and it's time to do it again. So, as we do every year, we want to start the season as early as we can and talk with you about the assumptions and policy directions that you are prepared to provide for us for the upcoming budget process. So with that, we'll just ask Pete to get right to it.
Thank you, Roger. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Roger said, we're very early on in the budget process. The fiscal managers and directors have been working on their budgets for the last few weeks, but we're still very early on. And so, you're familiar with this workshop. We come every year and I'll let you know the basic assumptions that we're operating under as we develop this budget and ask you for, if you want to add to those assumptions or give us some other policy direction as we develop the budget over the coming months. So today is that workshop, and then here's going to be our major budget workshops coming up. May 17th, we'll go through the capital program and major maintenance, primarily those departments that aren't Department of Transportation. You're all very familiar with the priority of those projects and our forecasted cost increases, but we'll bring you the rest of the CIP and major maintenance. The tax base assessment comes out June 1st, and so we'll have our first draft continuation budget June 21st, set maximum millages, and second draft August 2nd, final draft in August, and then two budget hearings, public budget hearings in September. And the next few slides will kind of edify these questions, but our questions that we'll ask at the end is, do you agree with these basic assumptions that we're building the budget now as we go forward? And is there anything else you would like to add to the assumptions? So these are our proposed assumptions right now, and they all relate primarily to the incredible growth we're having, both in population and tourism, and also the high-cost environment that we're experiencing, the private sectors experiencing, other government agencies locally and nationwide. So first, we'll present the continuation budget to you all, which is the cost provide the exact same service levels as the previous year, and that will be an increased cost, just based on service demand out there, based on population growth and demand for services. And I'll get into that in a few slides from now. We're in a high-cost environment. I'll go through that in a little bit, but we really need to focus on our must-have projects, and our real focus will be keep our high-priority projects on track, and we kind of have a priority of order of how we like to view those projects. And then keep up with growth. Growing service demand will require new positions. There's a number of positions requests that we'll bring to you, and competitive pay in this environment. So the current challenges, and you all are well aware of these, through February, Consumer Price Index for the previous 12 months was 7.9 percent. So that's inflation that's at a 40-year-high. Supply chain issues, which is resulting in higher construction costs and, in some cases, higher operational costs. Fast-growing area, we're the ninth fastest-growing county in the U.S. currently, 2.9 percent annual growth rate, which is a big percentage for a community our size. And then specific increases, fuel, energy, labor, and construction materials. So just a few of the cost increases. Electricity, so the electricity of the county pays. There was an FPL increase this year, and it's a big bump the first year, and then it basically levels off, but that bump was a 20 percent increase. Fuel, lubricants, chemicals, you know, all the vehicles that we have, all the transportation equipment, all our other equipment. Just as an example, our average regular price per gallon of regular gasoline last year was $2.29. Through January, it was $2.91, and we're currently at about $3.90. So we're experiencing those increases at the pump. Lubricants, chemicals, some chemicals, I think a couple of weeks ago, we had a chemical that's used in some of the wastewater treatment plants that we experienced a 65 percent increase in. So they're certainly an example of an operational increase based on the current environment. And then construction costs, you know, our road costs that we showed for our transportation projects, we're forecasting up to a 25 percent increase when we came to you in February. There are some materials, like steel, that have gone up 100 percent. So really, our priority for capital projects and major maintenance is going to be a couple of things, particularly with major maintenance, life-safety projects. So those projects that protect the life of our buildings and facilities, and also protect the lives of the people who inhabit those facilities. Public safety projects, one of the highest priorities. Transportation projects, as we keep the board's transportation priorities on track. And then outward-facing services, so things that we're doing, any kind of renovations or construction that we're doing where it's directly facing the public and helping with us provide that service. If it's just an internal renovation of some sort, administrative office renovations or just office renovations in general, those are really going to have to be put on hold so we can reallocate resources to these higher-priority projects. As I mentioned before, this just kind of gives you the last 40 years of, 30 years? Yeah, it's the last 30 years of population growth, and the key there being, from the University of Florida Bureau of Economic and Business Research, their 2021 estimate for population and growth in Lee County was 782,000. The census in 2020 was 760,000, so that's 22,000 residents a year. And by 2030, we would be at nearly a million based on that. And if you look at the Bureau of Economic and Business Research, their projections for 2030, a high-growth projection is a little over a million, and a medium growth is about at that 978,000. So the population growth is expected to increase at a pretty good clip. Maintaining service levels, we're going to come to the board with a number of positions requested in order to maintain service levels. And you're going to see a few of, quite a few of those in transportation, to maintain our transportation network, utilities, to maintain the growing utility system, and public safety, and likely parks also. And then other departments, one and two here, but these will be the big departments for positions.
Mr. Ray has a question. Microphone. Thank you, sorry.
Pete, any indication on how many openings we truly have relative to staff? You know, I mean, we budget for, how many vacancies or how many openings do we have?
I don't have current vacancies. I don't want to put Aaron on the spot. Do you know, Aaron, current vacancies, vacant positions? I don't think it's a high number.
No, it's not. Our unemployment is still reasonable, but we are finding that it's expanding, and our number of vacancies, which are already in the trend, and our driving positions are becoming very hard to fill.
So trending a little higher?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I actually have all that information at my desk at the moment. We have a small group internally that's reviewing all of that. As Aaron said, and this is important to know, we, you know, a year ago, when we'd advertise a job, we'd get many, many applicants. Today, we don't get as many applicants. They are still of very high quality, but that's an issue for the next six, eight, 10 months for certain.
Pete, you have a question before you go to the next slide? I'm sorry. Couple of slides ago, you were talking about the fuel costs of the county, you referring to electricity. So I know we also have our transfer, our, the fee, what's it called? Not transfer fee, the franchise fee, sorry, franchise fee. I thought about earlier, franchise fee on electric bills. So if those costs go up, I know the fluctuation rate is like 4. something, 4.5, I think, or something like that for the franchise. So this is a larger fee being charged, but we see an increase of funds being collected by the county for the franchise fee from P and L and E.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll still come out on the positive of that. We'll collect more in electric franchise fees than we're paying in electrical costs.
So where is that money going now currently? Does it go back to the regular general fund? Is that collected from the yearly franchise fees?
It's going to the unincorporated MSTU fund. We did that a few years to balance, a few years ago, to balance that fund.
I'm just thinking, I'm talking ahead, as we talk to the future about roads and cost of roads, and a lot of people always talk about the, obviously, the cost of electric vehicles, people using less gas, so we lose them gas tax. This is something maybe the future, we can talk about in the future. If the state doesn't preempt us for a statewide tax on electric vehicles, that's something we could do as far as collecting that franchise fee that everybody pays for charging their vehicles at home, then that fee could go towards roads, replacing gas tax, because they are paying for electricity. I personally, as I charge my vehicle at home, I'm paying for electricity, I'm paying a franchise fee, so I'm paying a tax on that fuel use. This is a different commodity of fuel, but I'm paying a tax until the state preempts us and does a statewide tax. Have you seen any other counties or cities use that fee yet for that, to replace road gas fees and taxes?
I haven't seen that myself yet, but I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
I know Texas, a couple of years ago, they imposed a tax, but before that, they were actually doing that with some franchise fees, were taking the franchise fee, replacing it for gas tax loss, but then everybody's pretty much paying into that pot. Just a thought, just to throw it out there. Do you do a percentage of it, or do you do a flat rate? Then you could put that towards road projects based upon the needs?
Yeah, there'll definitely have to be a solution for the gas tax ultimately.
Right.
We still do, just based on our growth and the number of visitors we have, we still have growing gas tax revenue.
Right, exactly. I was going to say that, just because there's other vehicles coming along, more efficient vehicles in many aspects.
Yeah.
You also increase the amount of vehicles on the road and trips, so you increase the cars, more trips, there's more consumption. And the trucking, for example, that's a fuel.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Pete, Mr. Sindeley?
I was going back to the same slide you had. When we look at, for instance, cost increases, fuel lubricants, obviously, it's the cost of materials, but also look back that we're using more based on growth. If you back that up maybe a couple of years, what were we typically seeing in a normal state of growth, if there's normal anymore? I mean, is a 30 percent increase, 10 percent or 20 percent higher than our normal growth last few years?
Yes, absolutely. I'm not sure what we were running.
I'm just trying to benchmark what these increases look like.
Yeah. Certainly wasn't double digits.
Commissioner, as we work through this budget cycle, we'll be looking at some of
that, and we'll, you know, we'll show you what that all looks like, including at the moment, we're taking a look at the component parts of inflation, and where the costs are increases, for what categories, whether commodities or construction or services, whatever it is.
I happened to be at a homeowners association last night for our community, and a letter came out from somebody saying, "Get ready," because they're doing the same thing, budget, and it's not pretty. So I'm trying to go back at home, see where we were, where we're going, what those increases may look like, and extrapolate it forward a little bit. Everybody's in the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
So the good news is that the county's revenue streams are very healthy, and as you can see, this is the taxable property tax, this is the taxable property values basically since the recession. Just so, last year, we got back to the tax base that we had pre-recession, and the Florida Revenue Estimating Conference estimates revenues for the legislature and state agencies, as well as all counties. In January, estimated that the tax-based growth in Lee County would be at least 10.4 percent. And then you can see the following five years that's being estimated. Our sales tax is coming in very strong, revenue sharing is coming in very strong, gas taxes are coming in strong, and tourist taxes are really coming in strong, so. You've seen this slide before, and just a couple of things to show is, you know, since the recession and the fiscal policies that the board has adopted, the county's been very financially stable. You went to the rollback last year, you can see there was a, this is, we're talking about $5 million out of the budget. So on paper, that was a $5 million deficit. In reality, I don't, I'm pretty sure that's not going to come true this year. But you can see what our ending reserves are, our reserve policy, and like the board always does each year, you build reserves, excess reserves, then you use them for primarily capital projects, use them, the growth increment funding is built into the general fund, is just a line item in the general fund. So you can see that you've invested well over $200 million in transportation projects, water quality projects, public safety projects over the last seven or eight years without, with lowering the general fund tax rate and without adopting any new fees. So that's a good thing. This is, you're all aware of, you know, where the general fund money is spent. This is primarily, I put this slide in for, this is to general public's education, but as in almost all counties in Florida, the sheriff is the largest agency in the general fund. We fund a good portion of the courts and constitutionals, and so a lot of, more of the general fund goes to other places than to county departments. This is the percentage breakout, and it doesn't change dramatically from year to year. We try to keep that in parity as much as possible. Then unincorporated MSTU, your biggest department and service in the unincorporated MSTU is transportation, and it's a big transfer to the Transportation Trust Fund, which also includes gas taxes. And then Community Parks is a big department in the unincorporated MSTU and community development, which charges a number of fees and charges. So each year, this is a general fund projection at the end of last year. So each year, based on the decisions that we make during the budget and the board, the policy direction we get from the board, we'll show you, you know, six- to seven-year projections so you can see, you know, projecting out is the best forecasting we can do, what those decisions today, what the impact is, not only today but in the future. You know, just as you recall, you know, our reserves start to go up quite a bit after '25, '26, because that's when we pay off all of our general fund debt. We're in a high-debt environment in the general fund now, which we prepared many years for. So for the general fund, unincorporated MSTU fund, library, and the all hazards, the four property tax funds, we'll show you long-term projections like that.
So Pete, you're showing '28, '29, that around $220 million were the reserves?
Yeah, that was our projection last year. Now that, this is going to change.
Higher or lower?
What's that?
Higher or lower, you think?
It's hard for...
Higher or lower, you think?
I don't know at this point. You know, what this doesn't take into account, what I'm trying to show is, what this doesn't take into account is, you're not, you don't just build excess reserves and never spend them, so you're going to be spending some of those, so you won't get over that amount. You know, the idea is to keep it above the 17 percent of general fund expenses, but certainly not that high. You'd find ways to...
If we were all sitting here together eight years from now looking at those numbers, it'd be a different world though, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, at some point in time, reality's going to come where we can't sustain these increases, where we can't sustain this hypergrowth. At some point in time, you know, the Fed's going to take control this year, and you'll see devastating effects pretty quickly. So I think you're doing a great job, Pete, at allocating and whatever, but costs are going to, we're going to come to a crossroads at some point in time where our projects that are our priorities are going to have to be determined, 1 through 10, and there might be a few that we might not be able to do, because in my opinion, I think we're going to be close to a recession, if not a recession, in '24. So if the Fed continues to do what it said it's going to do to calm down inflation, you can't grow at 8 percent and have 25, 30 percent increases in cost. And Pete could do whatever he wants from a revenue point of view, but it's not sustainable to offset the, you know, with additional revenues, it's just not going to happen. You know, in construction, as we all knew, when we looked at the list of project one, tier one, you know, we're at $300 million over. So at some point in time, there's going to be a balancing act we're all going to do, and that's just the elephant in the room. I don't want to be the salt in the doom, but that's just reality. You can't sustain what we're doing. But you know, what I want to do is make sure that we take care of people first, and that's the priority, because it takes more time and energy and dollars to recruit new people, and that's what my question was earlier. Some employees, a lot of people, it is really difficult to replace people, and it causes enormous infrastructure problems that you can't really appreciate. I know Roger can, but, so whatever we need to do, you know, I think your priorities are straight, and let's make sure we keep track and balance between construction and people first.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioners, that point should be well-taken. We, as we look at the inflationary environment that we're currently experiencing, there's no way to predict how that's going to go over the next several years, but Commissioner's point is, this certainly isn't sustainable. When we start talking about the workforce, we're competing with the rest of the world for the same employees, the same professions, same occupations, and just based on experience, when you start talking to young people about work, they're really interested in cash. They don't think a whole lot about retirement and some of the other things that will be real important to them later on. And so we're having to have these really serious conversations about what kind of recommendations to make to you so that not only can we retain an experienced, productive workforce, but at the same time recruit, recruit new members to the organization. I can't remember the number of people we have in drop right now, but it's a fairly significant number. And so, you know, this succession planning, retaining existing employees, and then attracting new employees is going to be a major effort for, you know, for the long term.
That's the balancing act that I was referring to, as you balance prices and increases and retention of people. I mean, we need to do whatever we can to be competitive, but you know, the other item that we need to deal with is workforce housing, which is, we could pay people X, Y, Z, but every day we encounter someone that's running into a problem trying to find a place, or the rent went up $600 or $700, and that's a month. There's no way we can sustain any type of increases to offset that. And that's just the reality, what's up there. I don't mean to salt in the doom, but that's what we're going to deal with. And at some point in time, we're going to have some really difficult choices. Recession's on foot.
Everybody wants to live within their means, but like you said, I was at the doctor's office the other day, and the doctor was telling me, "He can't hire anybody at $20 an hour." They want 25, which is $52,000 a year. So you're thinking, hire entry people even at $20 an hour, which is $42,000 a year, because the cost of living increased. So you short-staff, because you used to be able to get a job there before, they waited in line for $20 an hour, now they won't, nobody wants to work at $20 an hour. So it's unfortunate, but it's a reality to a certain point.
Our companies were ahead of the curve. When it was 15, we went to 18, and we went to 18, and we went to 22. I mean, again, the routine people, I don't need the turnover, and at the end of the day, it's more painful, and you might think you're saving money in the short term, and in reality, you're not.
You done, Roger? Go, Pete.
So Commissioners, just to recap, here's the upcoming workshops. We'll come back to you, the next one in May 17th with the capital and major maintenance program, and our basic assumptions, once again, which I discussed. And so is there anything else that you'd like us to consider as we move forward?
Any questions? Mr. Hammond?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, just kind of taking off of some of the other things that were already mentioned, I look at that one chart on the property values increasing, you know, we're in, this is year 10 now of increasing property values, and if history is any indication of what may happen in the future, we know that these cycles only last so long, these cycles of increased property values, and so, you know, 10 years is pretty deep into that positive cycle. So I think it is really important that we go with, you know, what's been proposed here as far as presenting a continuation budget, the exact same levels of service. Now, that doesn't mean spending won't increase. Obviously, spending's going to have to increase to keep up the same levels of service, but I think it's prudent to be conservative as opposed to adding a bunch of bells and whistles because we're flush with cash right now. You know, we don't know how much longer this positive cycle may last, and so I think we're on track with these assumptions.
I think we're good. It's just that there's a storm brewing, and we need to be prepared.
Right, yeah.
Commissioner, and Commissioner Hammond, that's, we view all of this, as you've just described, our, the continuation budget increases in spending are based on just a couple of things. One is inflation, and the other is demand-driven services. So as population growth, we have some services that simply demand more employees in order to keep up, and there are, those are fairly easy to identify. On the issue of the increased property values, you're absolutely right. These kinds of increased taxpayers cannot be sustained either. And so we recognize clearly that with the, I think, 95 or so revenue sources that make up the general fund, there's going to be some fluctuations in many of them, but then we also have the enterprise funds, which will, you know, we may have to adjust rates over the next couple of years. We'll just have to see how that goes, but there's no shortage of capital projects that we're going to have to take on for whether it's utilities and solid waste, you know, to respond to the growth. So we take all of that into consideration. So if we're missing something along the way that you all identify, please, don't hesitate to speak up, because this is a fairly complex jigsaw puzzle that we're working on here.
I mean, my only two cents is, and Commissioner Hammond touched on it this morning, is we're going to really need to look at these capital projects, because in one breath, the increase in cost are substantial, and delaying them or not necessarily resolving issues doesn't necessarily mean we're going to save money. So the other thing that we have to be cognizant of is, as interest rates increase, our capital or borrowing capabilities are certainly going to be more costly. So we have bridges in front of us and tolls. I mean, yes, we have capacity, but that's at a rate of 3% or 4%, not at 6% or 7%. And if the Fed does what it's supposed to do this year, they're talking as many as six increases at 50 basis points, that's 3%.
Yes, sir.
Pete's projections would be a lot different in borrowing for Cape Coral, or the bridges at 7% as opposed to 4%. Payments dramatically change.
That's a good, it would be a good question for the county's financial advisor to see if it's worth, I don't know if you can borrow money this far out, this early out before construction for the bridges, but is it worth borrowing the money now if we know we're going to have to anyways? Is it worth borrowing it now as opposed to borrowing it in a couple of years when, you're right, you could see a 3% interest rate hike by then?
You, for the bonding, the bonding part, if you make it a priority and start the process, I think we could do the bonding ahead of time, but let's not show up as long-term as worth the risk for that.
I think what's going to be the proof in the pudding is that the next update that Pete's going to give us is, we're going to need to make some tough decisions, because we're going to deal with major maintenance and capital items. I think that'll really give us a telltale sign of some exact numbers, what we're looking at, what are the revenue streams coming from, and what decisions can we make to maybe offset some of the increases we're going to be proposing. So I do look forward to the May update, because it talks about capital and maintenance, and you know, if you look at Pete's slide, I mean, that's really going to be the next substantive, I mean, this is the 100,000-foot level we just had today, but based on your calendar, May 17th should give us a pretty good indication. So I think we should have a more substantive conversation then, have more definitive information.
Commissioners, between now and then, we'll also have conversations with our financial advisor. I know we can borrow money in advance, but there's some, with some limitations, and so we'll talk, we'll talk to our financial advisor about what those limitations are and, you know, what possibilities may exist.
And is that information, Roger, I think, is that information on major maintenance and those capital projects become available? When you match the revenue streams, we'll see what opportunities they might be.
Right, right.
So I think that's, I'm looking for a little bit more meat on the bones to have a broader conversation, and maybe doing some strategic advance moves that we might want to consider.
Also have continuing conversations with the constitutionalists so we don't get any surprises upfront, as far as increase in projects there, or any other requests for build-out or anything like that. Anything else? Pete, Roger, do you... Pete, Roger, do you have any more, did you get direction? Did you get consensus of what you want today from this?
Yes, sir. My takeaway is, we're going to continue preparing the budget based on a continuation philosophy. We're going to take a look at keeping all the high-priority projects on track, and to the extent that we run into any issues with that, we will report back in the next meeting. And then otherwise, any growth in costs will be driven by inflation and demand-driven services. Does that work?
That works.
Thank you. Yes, sir, we're good.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Mr. Sandelli?
Everything will be differently, you know. We talk a lot about people, we'll ask, are we in a bubble right now? I think the situation right now is...
Commissioner, your mic is too...
Okay. And that's that we, are we in a bubble? Right now, we're in a situation where we have demand exceeding supply. It's as simple as that. And how do we meet that? If there's a good thing about it, it seems like every market is going through the same thing, which means not everybody is going to be coming to Florida. So I think the balance for me is, how do you manage the growth that we have? How do you, the mayor of New York was on radio this morning and stuff like that, and he was saying that we want to welcome our people back, you know? Well, I mean, there's different menus for each thing. So I think, understand from my perspective, we have demand exceeding supply. That will mitigate at some time, which will help to some point. There's a whole host of other factors there. So I wouldn't get, I think, as Brian said, let's manage as we've been doing, stay that track, I think, instead of trying to be all over the place. Once you get out of the, we put ourselves in a great position here. I think, once we get too far away from that, we could cause some other problems, and I think we have to be careful. But I'm glad we're on the receiving side for the most part.
Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? You good? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.